Good evening. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland. It's June 25, 2025, and we welcome you to our meeting tonight. I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call. Let's start on this slide, please.
Laurie Brown.
And I'm Cindy Green Gold.
Mary Sue Graceman.
Christopher Smith.
Kelly Hahn.
So let the record show that Commissioner Redkay is not here at this time. And then we're going to go to the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm sorry?
And Rachel's missing.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We also have a Commissioner Weaver is also not with us.
Let us know.
Thank you. Yeah, appreciate it. Okay, everybody, stand, please, and pledge. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the people who live in Richmond.
Okay, number three is approval of the June 25, 2025 Planning Commission Agenda. Has everybody looked over the commi-- okay, we'll just assume everybody's looked at the agenda. I would like to actually amend the agenda, if I might. So I would like to move that we add election of officers to the agenda. Do I have a second? Okay, we have a second. Any discussion on this item? No, no discussion. Okay. All in favor of adding that to the agenda? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Next. We're going to go with number four, approval of the minutes of May 28, 2025.
I second.
Any questions, issues, deletions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Number five, let's go ahead and go to our public comment. Go ahead and if you wouldn't mind coming on up to the dais or to the podium, rather, and giving us your name and address and share with us what you have.
Sure. I'm Joyce Hamer. I'm from 8444 Clear Spring Drive in Richfield Station. I am the HOA/COA President in my section, Richfield 5. We are in the section that has the issue with the developer not completing our roads. I've been there since 2014. The roads were supposed to be finished when he was done building. He hasn't done anything since 2014, literally hasn't done anything. I mean, we have lots of things in the community. The roads just are the most visible to everyone because it's in front of the trail. So not only does it affect 900 or 800 residents in Richfield, anybody that accesses the trail, they have to go through ridiculous roads that the manhole covers are inches above the road. We've had kids, you know, five-year-olds wreck their bicycles. It's just, it's just ridiculous. And it's been, like I said, it's, I've been there 12 years, and it's been longer than that that the conditions have been that way. And I know our main HOA has been trying to deal with the developer and trying to get them to fix, you know, these things along with, you know, issues with trees and sinkholes and all these other things. And he's been non-compliant in all these ways. So it's my understanding that now he's trying to build in the front of the neighborhood as well as, I'm not sure if he's going to try to finish our area, but regardless of any future building, he's got a lot of things that he's neglected for over a decade. So I just want to make sure before you guys approve any permits or anything for him to continue building, that you're aware that he's got all these loose ends that, and I know he has a bond that has not been tapped into for all these things. So I just want to make sure that it's full disclosure for everyone here that he doesn't move forward until he addresses all the things he's neglected.
I'm glad you came in here to talk about it. I've actually gotten some emails about it, questions about it. Maybe our planner, Ms. Franklin, can enlighten us a little bit about that whole area. Tell us what's going on.
So the, the issues with the, the roads and the bond and all that, that's not really my department, but that is being dealt with by the appropriate department. As far as building permits and subdivision, we don't, we don't have any, we don't have any approved subdivisions to issue permits on. And so they would have to come forward with the subdivision application to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay.
Before any permits could be issued.
Okay. So hopefully he's aware that he, it's my understanding that, you know, the council, the town and councilmen have been in contact with him and they are working to resolve it. But I know in February, this came up at the, at that meeting, and they were supposed to come out, someone was supposed to come out and inspect the area and hasn't. So I'm just trying to keep the ball rolling that this is all addressed in full transparency, that everybody understands all the things that have to be done.
And I assume you've been talking to Dr. Samelia about this and--
I have not.
Sorry.
This is, this is new to me to speak on it. It's been the, the primary HOA that has been dealing with all of this. It's just the fact that now our development is getting improved with roads that are, were in much better condition because the HOA is taking care of the roads as they should. But because this is the developer's responsibility, our roads are being neglected. So it's caused an uproar in my section because we can't get snow removal, because the plows can't come back there because of the manholes. So we have to wait for backcoats to come back there. We're the last ones. We're on a hill. It's just, they, they call us the neglected people of the neighborhood because it's, yeah, where, they joke, we're the stepchildren of the neighborhood because it's just, and it's all, I mean, I understand it's the developer, but people are getting mad at the HOA because they don't understand that it's not the HOA's fault and the HOA's been working on it. But it's just, it's just very frustrating. And it affects a lot of people, not just--
Oh, it does affect a lot of people. And a lot of people have been complaining about it. And you would think, isn't there a legal system here that we could, you know, tap into?
I know there's a bond. So I know how that works.
Yeah.
And if you don't perform, that's what a performance bond is. So--
But we, why hasn't Chesapeake Beach pulled the bond? If this was 2012 and we're in '26, what do we have to do to enforce the bond and pull it? We pull it in the government. So why aren't we pulling in Chesapeake Beach?
I, I can't answer those questions.
If he doesn't know the answer. But that is just pretty much--
So those are--
So who do we ask those questions to? Whose department is it and who do we ask?
I would go to Dr. Samelia and Town Council for those answers. I can only answer the Planning and Zoning questions.
Which, that really is beyond our--
Dr. Samelia is who my petition is addressed to. I was told from the Town Council meeting that he was made informed. So I have no, I've had no personal contact with him, but--
It's she, yeah.
She. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Like I said, I'm--
It's the town administrator.
That's his name.
The town administrator.
Okay.
Okay.
It's a doctor. So, yeah.
He's, yeah, she's the one that you would probably want to go and have a discussion with. The, the central HOA that you've got is probably dealing with her, I would bet.
I believe her and Jay.
And Jay.
Yeah. I think--
Public Works, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But I'm glad you did come in and just remind everybody where you're at and where you're, but we so far have not seen any--
That's wonderful news. I'm glad to hear that.
Yeah.
Because I know he is, that's his intention. So--
Well, I guess we don't know what his intention is, right? What the developers' intentions are. I don't know. I don't know. We don't know yet.
Yeah.
But I think your point is that you just want to get your stuff taken care of before--
Right. I don't care if he builds.
You don't care about the developments so much as you care about getting your stuff--
Addressed before.
Addressed, exactly.
He causes more frustration.
But it's good to be aware and, because not everybody here lives in it. We do have some Richfield Station people that do know what's going on. In fact, maybe you have something more to add to that.
So what happened was is when the, when the condos collapsed in Florida, every HOA had to have an assessment done. Richfield Station had an assessment done, and the roads had to be, part of the assessment was the roads and the townhouse areas had to be done. Matter of fact, I might be wrong, but they even wanted Richfield Station to pave the roads that the developer owes, owns, which we are not allowed to legally do. But they have it in the assessment. I believe that we should be doing it, but we can't do it. But so now, like, before you used to have a little drop, and you had a little drop, but now that they're doing the rest of it, you have a significant drop when you go from one section to the another.
We keep joking that somebody's popping a tire. I mean, it's--
Oh, wow. Wow.
Yeah.
I'm just curious. How, do you know how much money is in the bond and then with accumulated interest, vis a vis what it's going to cost for him?
I don't know anything about the bond other than he has one and it hasn't been tapped into.
And also, to your point, it doesn't matter what his intent is. It's the law. I mean, it's his obligation.
It's been more than a decade.
I know.
It's an obligation.
You wonder why. And that has not been our purview. We don't know.
Yeah. Sure, I understand. I'm just getting--
We've had a change.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We've had a challenge, a change of administrators and planners, people in, in the administration. So things may have gotten a little confused as what was going on and what is going on. I don't know. But certainly if they come through with a permit, this will--
Red flag to you guys.
Yes. We will obviously be aware of what's going on. So thank you for the, for coming to us. So we appreciate that.
I appreciate your time. Like I said, I understand that there's another step to this, but I appreciate--
Yeah, thank you.
Your time.
Okay. Any other questions? Or thank--
I just came from Prince Frederick. I hope that's not coming here.
No, I, no, I meant--
These manhole covers. Be careful of the manhole covers.
You might want to consider surveying your neighborhood to see if they can start documenting--
Accidents?
Yeah.
Accidents, what it's cost them, out-of-pocket expenses due to the damage of the car, different things like that, injuries to children, accidents, things like that. And then take that to the town.
That is, that is actually part of my petition and be sure to make that very clear when we go to the meeting. That's in July, is that?
The next one is July. For Town Council, yes.
Well, congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
I'm sure, yeah, Bill will probably, probably go. Yes, he probably would.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Hi.
Sorry to hear of all those issues over there. It's too bad. Oh, dear. Never good to hear that. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and do new business, which is the election of officers. Now, at the last meeting, I had the, the general sense that nobody here was really interested in changing where they're sitting and how they're doing things right now. The reason that I became chair, well, not the reason why I became chair, but we were on a June to May schedule until we had one of our commissioners go to the Town Council. She was our chair. When she went to the Town Council, then we needed to have a special, special election. So then we went ahead and had our election. I think it was in December, maybe, or wasn't it December of last month, uh, last year when I took the chair position from her? I don't remember. But anyway, and when we looked it up, we looked up and it said just an annual election is all we needed. It didn't give us a time period or a timeframe, but what I did realize after the last election and the fact that Commissioner Brought was, you know, she ran, she won, she had to leave us, it seemed logical that we needed to go on a similar rotation, at least in my opinion, a similar rotation to the Town Council. So if they're a January, or their election is from January, you know, whatever, they, they go into office in January. And it would seem logical that you get this commission onto a January schedule also so that then if somebody comes from the commission, which happens, you know, somewhat frequently, we had Commissioner Blackwolder go up, et cetera. So if you have to then replace a chair or, you know, a position on here, that we, we can then easily change positions here at the same time so that we can get a new chair in at the time that we need to change. Does this make any sense as anybody, or no?
I think you're trying to run parallel.
Yes, you're kind of saying, I'm kind of trying to make it so that we have a parallel election schedule so that we can fill positions more easily. Now, I've been doing this for six months, and I don't mi, I definitely do not mind if somebody would like to take this position. I would be more than happy to say, hey, you know, it's, if it's, you know, if you want to do this, it's fine. But I didn't get in that, get that reception last time. So I'm thinking what we could do then is get on the same schedule, and I could make a motion tonight where we go back onto a January to December schedule for our elections, if you all are in agreement that that would be okay. Which means that I'm here till--
Till the end of the song.
Till January. Till I blow my brains out. I don't know. But--
It's a little much.
Well, maybe a little bit of a hyperbole. But anyway, so I will move, if, if it's okay with you, I'm going to make a motion that the Planning and Zoning Commission amend its election of officers term to commence on January 1 and terminate on December 31, beginning in year 2025. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions, concerns, discussion, et cetera? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Let's go to the old business, which is signage. And where I'd like to start, if, now, I know Jan was having a hard time at looking at these page numbers, but if you can see the little page number down at the bottom, I'd like to start. Oh, there she is. I just texted you. I was hoping--
No, I know.
Okay, sorry. Oh, yeah. Well, I'm still on the seven o'clock schedule, so there's that. Okay. Welcome, Commissioner Redkay. Welcome.
Bonjour.
So we have now gone on to our old business, which is signage, and I'm going to go to page, if you can look down the very bottom, there's a page faded 15, and it's K Commercial Districts. Now, we are on temporary signage. If you can see, we're, we're in a temporary signage chapter, but we kind of moved into commercial districts. Now, um, you want me to go to I was going to have, oh, I'm in the wrong place. I was going to have Ms. Franklin go over a little bit about this, and, and we've, it's gotten a little bit confusing here, actually, but, um, we, you want to, you want to go ahead and discuss what we were talking about, or?
So the draft that you all have has a section for commercial signs, separate from residential signs. But what we, we discussed earlier was that you really don't want a house covered in signs either. So instead of designating commercial versus residential signs, it's all signs, right? So temporary signs are allowed to account for a certain percentage of coverage, and permanent signs are allowed to account for a certain percentage of coverage. So what you see here is the total area of all temporary visible signs on a building, its windows, or any other area of a lot or combination of lots that make up a single property shall not exceed 5% of the total of each street-facing side of the building.
Fifteen, you said fifteen, you said five.
So for temporary signs, we picked 5%.
Okay.
Permanent signs, which I'm just gonna-- It's the same language, except for it says permanent instead of temporary, and it's 15% instead of 5%. You don't, we, we've rearranged it from the draft that you have to address that concern. So--
So if you look down under where it says Commercial Districts, on, it says letter K, Commercial Districts, notice that there's, um, the total area of all visible signs on a building, its windows, or any other area of a lot or combination of lots that make up a single property shall not exceed 15% of the total of each street-facing side of the building.
It's saying 5%.
She is saying 5%.
It's temporary versus per--
But we're talking, this is--
What you're looking at, yeah.
This--
This is under temporary.
This is under temporary, and it does say 15 under temporary.
So, yes, because we, when we, what I sent you--
But--
Has it split up with Commercial Districts being different than Residential Districts? We moved it to putting them all the same and decided to split the percentages. So you can't have 30% coverage when you add them together. You can get to 20% coverage when you add them together.
So the concern was if you have 15% of the face of the building, 15% is covered with signage. If you then add more temporary signage to that, you're then increasing it from 15 to 20%? Or what, you know, if you're adding 5% of the temporary signage to the permanent, which is 15, you're up to 20% of the building--
For a temporary period.
For, for the temporary period, while you've allowed that temporary signage to go up. So, um, I guess, so the question is then, did you, did we want to take? So right now, it's saying, under our temporary sign, it's saying 15%. Did we want to take that all out and change it? Or how do we want to do that then?
So, because you guys know, I'm on this live document, so you can look at, can you guys actually, you can, can you read it?
It's going to make a whole lot more sense.
Yeah. So we got rid of the commercial piece and just started General Regulations, Temporary Signs, the total area that you're allowed, and made that be 5%. Under permanent, it's the same thing, except for it's 15%. And so you no longer have, used to have, when you, it's not here anymore, right here, this--
There it is.
Section under Allowed With A Permit For Commercial Districts, we reduced it down to just whether you're in a residential or a commercial district, it's still that 15% for permanent and 5% for temporary.
Now, the other question we had is, because we're not doing this by districts or zones, you know, we have like where the BIA area is, that's commercial. Across the street is RV2, which is really a, I call it a kind of a semi-commercial because you're allowed to have businesses in that area. Do you know what I'm referring to? Across the street from BIA is a district called RV2, and that is a residential slash small mom-and-pop type businesses are allowed in that district. So you can have like a, you know, a little hairdresser with a one or two, you know, shampoo area, or, you know, a shoe store, a shoe repair guy, or, you know, a lawyer may set up a shop and just have one guy come in and see him every hour or so. So you can have a very small mom-and-pop business in that area. So the question is, are they, are they allowed the same kind of signage? Are they allowed signage at all? So that's another question.
This allows the same signage for everyone. Some, so, you know, Commissioner Brown could decide that he wants to put a bunch of signs on his house, and as long as it's 15, no more than 15%, he can install those, and he has a permit, right? He can install those permanent signs or 5% of temporary signs on his house.
Now, the question is, do we want residential areas to have commercial signs on them?
It's not regulating, the, the idea was not to regulate the content of the sign. That was one of the pieces of direction, was not to say what's on it, just its size. So the signs could say happy birthday, or have a nice summer.
15%.
Of the face.
Of the face. Right.
Of the--
For a permanent sign.
Wall for the, yeah, right, exactly. Or 5% for a temporary sign.
Yes. Remember the movie, if this, you know, if it's Tuesday, this must be Belgium. This is how I feel. So are you saying because the 15% for permanent would apply residential or commercial? And that's just temporary? Or is that also per--
That would be permanent. The 15% is permanent.
So--
Additional 5%.
Right. So I'm just trying to think about residential homes would have, could have a sign on their home.
Well, and that's what I'm sitting here thinking about. We, we definitely don't want to have 15% of somebody's residential, well, I mean, this would not pertain to HOAs.
Right.
This would only pertain to all of us who are, you know--
Y'all still matter.
No, we do matter, and we don't want to junk up our area. So that is a question. Do we want to have them, you know, have only commercial signs in commercial areas only?
I think it's, it's percentage. If, if you wanted to stay consistent with what we're doing, it doesn't matter if they're commercial signs or be kind signs, they, it's the area they're taking up. So you could say that in residential zones, all signs shall not exceed 5%. And in commercial zones, it's 15%.
So let me, let me ask, how do you determine 5%? And, and I'll explain where I'm going. You see these yard signs now that are really neat, like somebody's graduating, or a whole group of kids are graduating. So you might see a banner, like in Richfield Station, it's really neat. They went and had a banner made for all the kids that are graduating, right? And they hung that up. And then, you know, some of them do the yard signs where, you know, congratulations, and it's real spelled out in their name and everything else and, and all that other stuff. If that exceeds the 5%, how do we, how do you calculate this 5%? Who's going to enforce that compliance? And then if they did, what is the, the effect?
Right. So when we're using a percentage, it is harder to calculate. And so from enforcement perspective, it's, it's not that the code enforcement officer is going to measure everyone's house and calculate that 5%. It's that you're going to be able to visually notice when it seems to be exceeding the 5 or 15%. And then you're going to do the calculation. Temporary signs are a little different, and your congratulations for graduating sign is up for a weekend, right, usually? So by the time, by the time you get your--
Code enforcement?
Code enforcement letter--
It'll be gone?
Your sign is gone. And I'm not saying that makes it okay to have cluttered signs everywhere, but I think that people don't have to be afraid of their congratulating their kid, and now they have a fine. It's not going to go immediately to fines.
Good thing.
Did that answer all of your question?
So what does everybody think about that idea of--
So they're going to get a code enforcement letter, but the signs will be gone from the house, so then they won't have to pay for the fine?
If, if they get a code enforcement letter, right? Because if your sign is up for the weekends, or even for a week, it's, does code enforcement see the sign, think it is more than 5% just easily visually? And if they see it's a temporary sign, they may just knock on the door and say, hey, that sign is kind of big. When are you taking it down, right? Because that is a lot more expedient than measuring areas and doing calculations and writing a letter. Yes? So, so there's what we write here, right? And then there's practically how ordinances are enforced. So--
Who's our code enforcement officer?
Billy.
Garner?
Varner.
Varner. Does he work in, with Jay? Okay, all right. And he's out every day checking things out, signwa, not sign-wise, but code-wise? Ah, okay.
I'm just--
Yeah.
Actually, I can't imagine what 5% of a--
I can't either.
If this is, if this is the front of my lot, from this to this, 5% would potentially be over to the corner of that, for me, just rough draft, would be to there. So that would mean to me, I could only have it from that wall to the corner of that. So that's 5%. So can I stack that? I only can come this way 5%, but can I stack the signs like, so like it graduates up because you're only doing 5%? Is it, like, that whole strip is 5%? Like--
So there's, there's other ways to do this. This ties it to, you know, the smaller your lot is, the smaller your sign is, the bigger area you have, the bigger your sign can be. We can create even like a table with, if your-- We can create even like a table with, if you're. If you want to tie it to a lot, then, because if you have a deep lot, you can be allowing a lot of frontage. You know what I mean? It's, it, sometimes they tie it to the, the length of the street frontage, right? So you can do that and create sort of graduated amounts of sign area. Based on your street frontaged. Um, there's not a, like.
Temporary signs are to me the most complicated and the most abused. And this is where, and so if I'm looking at St. Michael's right here, um, they've delineated the temporary signage into uses. So for example, um, special sales signs, they have one through seven different criteria about special sales signs. So in other words, around Christmas time, you have a special sale, you want to be able to have specifics about what you can have for a temporary sign there. They have at public events, another temporary sign situation, commercial banners, another one. Vertical banners, which must mean the flag feather, the feather flag sign, Sarah. I don't know. And then they have a commercial public event sign. So they have them broken down and we could do it that way as well. Gets a little more complicated. Um, but I think your point is well taken. It's really hard to determine the sizing when you do percentages.
And I always try to go from the aspect of kiss, keep it simple, stupid, being stupid me, right? I'm looking at this and I'm trying to calculate what's five percent and I'm asking and I'm the one on here writing this.
And St. Michael's will have a specific, specific square feet footage of signs. So the special sales signs will not exceed ten square feet. So they actually have it more specific. You can go up, oh, it's ten square feet. Nope, that's out, you know, so. You can do it that way and it gets a little more wordy because they have like two pages of this stuff. So it depends on how, which way this commissioner wants to go on that.
Either that or if it's a temporary sign, we put a thing up that says, you know, the temporary sign should only be up seven days.
Yeah.
Um. Well, temporary signs usually are for um, longer than like a week, you know, usually. Like St. Michael's has thirty, thirty consecutive days. We had sixty, but you know.
I think, oops, wrong thing. Um, there's the difference between residential, temporary, residential areas and temporary signs in the commercial area, right? You only need your congratulations graduate sign for seven days. But you might need your, we're having a special fall fest here, sign up for thirty days.
Okay.
So maybe we do sort of split by districts and so we're saying. Your temporary sign can only be up for seven days in a residential district. You're going to have to carve out. Political signs and.
And not have a percentage assigned to it?
Not have a percentage.
And real estate signs.
Real estate signs are already carved out.
You know, this is where it all gets.
Because real estate signs are.
Um, Commissioner Reck, you're taught, you're thinking about something.
I'm thinking that the, that the percentages are burdensome. I mean. Yeah, I, I don't have any spatial visualization. I can look at a forty by thirty foot house and check where here, he'd go, oh. Here's what it is. I'm clueless. I, I mean, I am just, can't do it.
And then in Annapolis, they do it one linear, one square foot to each linear foot of they, of uh, building. So everybody's got a different way of calculating. Um, I happen to like St. Michael's way. Because it seems very precise. Okay, for the, uh, this kind of event, you can only have this size banner. For that kind of event, you can have that, you know, so they actually have really fine tuned it. Um, as far as all the different temporary signs in a commercial area, only commercial area. So again, if you want the banner for the graduates, you know.
Do they do anything there for residential?
No, I didn't, I didn't see it for residential.
I just, I just want to make sure that whatever we select, it is easily understood.
Yes.
That it doesn't cause more confusion, right? It should be understood of, oh, I only can do this. And it, and it doesn't lead to confusion of, oh, now I have a fine, but I thought I was good with the regulation of my interpretation. I've got a question on that code enforcement letter. Does the first letter say you have, you have one day to remove this sign and then there's a fine or?
I don't actually know about.
Because if it says you have to remove the sign, you've already removed it, then you don't have to worry about the fine.
Right, so I don't know how your code enforcement works. You, you know. Um, I think the, the trick here, right, is that. We were kind of working down and like each sign can be this big and we were, we're putting that all together. And then we said, okay, well, now people can have a whole lot of signage. Um, and it's feeling confusing because they've got to see which kind of sign. And so can we have a way to just give them a certain amount of signage for their lot? Um, and so I think the question is, do we want to still give them a certain amount of signage for their lot? Rather than, or do we want to delineate each sign can be a certain size? And then is that based on a percentage or do we find a different way? To give people, you can do whatever you want within this area. Or is it easier to say this type of sign can only be this big and this type of sign can only be this big, which, which is more simple?
Um, does your HOA have a signage, uh, set of rules? And what, do you remember what their signage rules were for temporary signs?
I don't recall at this time, but there is, and it became an issue during um, a presidential election.
Oh, yeah, well.
So it, there was, somebody, somebody hung a sign, somebody hung a sign that was pretty big. Off of, uh, and this was years ago, off of their like balcony. And someone was like, you know, this exceeds the signage. And so it got to their attention.
Yeah, codes are usually enforced by, you know, people who are unhappy with it, so they complain. Um, okay, so, so we're not liking the percentages. I can hear that um, as an issue. So if we don't like the percentages, um, I mean, we, we know big percentages like twenty-five percent. We know a quarter of a building would be of one fourth of, we could, we can do the big numbers. But when it comes down to little five percentage, this and that, it gets a little more complicated.
But maybe we clarify, is it fifteen percent of the size of the building or is it fifteen percent of the size of the lot?
No, it's the size of, uh, side. So if you can visualize, you know, okay, if it's not a quarter, then it's, you know, smaller than a quarter, a, a fourth of it, then it's, you know. Again, yeah, it's going to have to be complaint and it's going to have to be.
But I mean, don't you think that um, if someone's going to a sign. Or a business to have a sign made, let's say it's a, for a business. And it's going to be on the front of the building. Don't most people have, maybe they don't, and maybe, I don't know if it can be made available on the website. A database that shows what that front facade or whichever facade is at issue. So they can bring that to the sign company and I'm allowed to have a sign that's fifteen percent of this. And this is my frontage. And then the sign company does it.
Well, I think where you get to be, uh, it's a challenge is really with the temporary signage because.
Okay, I'm confused which, which we're discussing.
I mean, the permanent signs, um, I think are a little easier in one way. Um, you have money control, you know, there's a, is a great, greater cost. But um, okay, let's just go back. We don't, are we here, are we saying we don't like percentages? Do we want to go to a different method? Does everybody think that a different method would be better?
I thought the reason we were switching to the percentages is because we didn't want to break down the individual signs of like, okay, how many? Like how many two by two signs or they could have, or they could have fifty one by one signs, you know, that, like that was kind of a scenario that we're. So there's a lot of, I feel like there's a lot of hypotheticals. So like, I, I thought, I mean, to me, and I know it's not like everyone. But like seeing a percentage of a sign, I get a really good idea of, you know, looking at the fit, I mean, looking at the front of, I cut it in half. Cut that in half and then half of, half of a quarter is my sign.
That's it.
No, not at all, yeah. It's like if you just divide the house in half, cut that in half, that's about the amount of signs that you can have, you know? So it's just, I feel like that's a pretty standard like way of doing it rather than breaking down the individual signs.
Agree with um, commercial.
Sure.
That, that I think is probably expected by most businesses that go in, that there are limitations of some kind. And that they could, maybe they're more adept or interested or whatever it is to figure out the percentages. A homeowner's, I, I think we just.
So what about the homeowners that are allowed to have businesses like we're talking about in the area that's right across there? Do we want to prevent that from happening, being different from like a strictly commercial building? As opposed to running a biz, like running a business out of your home and still having fifteen percent up to twenty.
Why not just pick a number?
Pick a number, yeah.
Everybody has the same.
Yeah, if we're concerned about residential businesses having like their, like the signs not being bigger, then I think we should just make that number less, you know? Because we don't want twenty percent of their house being a sign in the neighborhood.
And you're saying temporary. See?
I will define what I'm talking about at the beginning of what.
Why couldn't we separate out the RV two? And say if a business exists in RV two, they can have blank percentage, which will be lower, I suspect, than any commercial endeavor.
That's the thing is that when we don't have zones, we don't specify commercial, whatever. We're going to have, we're going to, we're going to have a house in the RV one. You know, Commissioner Brown's going to have a big, you know, somebody next door is going to have a big commercial sign, marijuana sold here or something.
I thought that was in there, we're not allowed to do that.
I'm just, you know, being silly, but I'm just saying, we gotta, we've got to be specific so that we don't have the other zones. Uh, the RC, you know, the, uh, we just have to be careful here that we don't allow them in all zones.
Well, the other issue is, I don't think anybody knows what zone they're in unless they're a commercial entity. Restaining building. I mean, RV two, I mean, I get it because you just talked about that area down there and the same exists for my house.
Yeah, that's right. And your area, well, your area is the TC, the town, the town, um, center.
Right.
Um, town residential center or something, I can't remember what it is. Do you remember what, what her, um, where?
Across the street from the hair cutting place.
Right, yeah, right around the tangled area. That's neighborhood town, commercial or something like that.
My point is, I don't think anybody knows.
Yeah, that's right. The concern is putting too much signage. Or otherwise. Be careful.
Excuse causes in.
So we can set own in which residential uses are allowed. That includes, has ten percent, right, instead of fifteen percent. So then you have a.
A permanent sign, you're talking permanent signage.
Right.
I'd say that again.
So any, any zone which contains residential uses.
I don't think there should be any permanent signage in anything but commercial. Why would you want per, permanent signage in residential?
Because the TC has residential and commercial.
Except your house, which is the mixed, except the mixed areas, yeah, yeah. But the RV one, the.
Down here, what you're talking about, RV two across from BIA.
Right, exactly. Yeah, right. So, um, but those do have little businesses in them, so they want to advertise, they want to say a mom and pops, you know, shoe store or shoe repair. You know, um, so they could have a little sign that is, you know, mom and pops shoe repair. But we don't need to have ten percent of the face of the building. What if they have a two-story building, uh, where they sleep upstairs and they have their little shop downstairs, you, you know? Do they really want to have a big sign that's two, that's ten percent of that entire face? In a residential, uh, residential community, a basically residential community.
The other option is to use a percentage for commercial and use just a total square footage for residential. Because do, I haven't noticed any, but you know how sometimes people name their houses?
Yes, yes, I want to name my house actually, anyway.
Oh yeah, I have noticed them. You guys, yes, residential areas have them. Um, so that's permanent sign. But maybe it doesn't need a permit, but there has to be a pers, there has to be some allowable amount. And maybe it's easier for residential uses to say X square feet. Um, regardless of how big your house or lot is, it's.
How about if we say, other than commercial zones? Uh, commercial zones will have this and all others will be allowed a, you know, no more than a two by five or two. You know, something, some kind of a sign that they could put if they were going to name their house or if they were going to put up a little mom and pops, you know. Um, shoe repair shop. How about if they just have a little sign that's, you know, what, you know, two by, yeah, or something like that, something small. That we could allow them a sign, but it's not intrusive or not imposing. Um, what does everybody think about that? And then you could, you could also put up their congratulations graduate, or I don't know, whatever, but I don't. I mean, but that would be the permanent sign. The temporary sign, you could have a banner, hey, happy, you know, graduation, whatever. And that could be your three by eight or whatever we said, you know, a banner would be. Because we need to have, so now we're looking at districts. Now we're going back to looking at zones again because we're coming up with these issues. So. We, you know, in Annapolis, they do a chart and they have all the different zones and they have what you, you know, you know what the, the chart is. And they have every different kind of sign, you get every sizes, whatever, in the different zones.
And I promised to make you a chart once we have this.
I, I know, I know.
Figure it out if we have the chart now.
The question is, do we want to go with that kind of system where you have the different zones and what they're allowed to have? Because that gets a little complicated, but.
Maybe not though. I mean, because.
We're trying to make it simple.
But, but you have so many, it's like the exceptions are swallowing the rules.
That's the problem. As I'm thinking about all the different, um, sections we have, and then we've got JANS, which is the mixed use situation.
JANS, could you move Jan?
Yeah, move into a normal area. We need to have one of everybody's.
I still don't think that, you know, if you're going to put out, you know, instructions by zone. You better have a zoning map right next to it so people can figure it out. They will not know. They will not know. So to do that is, is doubly confusing to me. Although I know it's necessary to separate some of that out, but.
What is it to find out what zone you're in? Uh, and I'm not saying that snarkily, but if you want to find out what zone you're in.
Who do you call?
Well, no, I mean, can you not put in your, I'm wondering, if, if I put my address in Google or in like the town.
Send the book.
It is in our book.
But I'm talking about for.
Probably on the website.
On the website, right. And, and so people could find it.
That makes sense.
Number one, number one would be, what zone are you in? Number two, what kind of signs? Check for the kind of sign. I mean, I just think that if you create the instructions and have links for things that they might need. Hyperlinks or whatever. I don't think it would be that complicated. Um, once you get the verbiage.
Right.
Because all you would have to have is your zone and then for temporary signings, you get to have this, for permanent signs, you get to have that. When, then we'd have to delineate between temporary and permanent signs once again.
For each zone.
For each zone, right.
But you, and you have electronic messaging sign.
Well, that is, sign. We're going to go into, except for the school district, which is.
A Jan again, right?
Is, yeah, well, it's more than a Jan, it's actually in a zone that really shouldn't have, uh, EMCs at all.
This is where your zoning map is, right here. It's in, at the beginning, when you go into the zoning code. On Ecode, it's there, you click on it and then it's right here.
There could be a hyperlink under signs for that. Click here for your zoning, your, your area.
Could do a lot of things.
I'm just saying how people would actually use it.
Yes.
If they want to sign, you'd say, here's, you need to go to WWW dot what have you, click. Tell them how to do it.
We have commercial zone, we have four commercial zone.
And we have everybody else. Only two area.
Thing on.
He's also talking.
No longer.
Oh.
Just talking to Jan.
Oh, okay. Sign in your yard. Would you think, oh, I need to go to the zoning code and look and see what it is, or you would just put a sign up in your yard? This is personal.
Ladder, the ladder, the ladder. Yes.
Sitting on this committee, I'd be like, oh, my daughter's graduating. I'm just putting.
It's only if your neighbor complains and then you go, well, let me look and see what the rules really are, but you have to have rules set. So that if indeed they're violating it, your neighbor has some, you know, a right to say, hey, you know, put it down and make it smaller, whatever.
Yeah. Was for, for like, if it was egregious, right? Like if it was something, then we can have code come out, they can look at it and then handle it from there.
And that's why going back to St. Michael's, I like how they put in exactly what size a temp, a temporary residential could be. It's, you know, and, uh, whatever it was. But I think we may have to go that route during what everybody's, you know, they don't like the percentage. I get it. Yeah. Go first. It's so vague.
Percentage and maybe have a little chart in there that says, if this is the front of your house, like you just drew. Here it is. You can do this percentage.
Right, right.
It's a little image that, you know, because you have some that can read and pick it up and then you have some that need the visual.
That's true. It, it gets complicated when you have the like, let's look at Winward Key. Of course they are an HOA, but, um, they would probably have further restrictions. But if you had something that was two and three stories, you're gonna have, you know, maybe some large signs. Larger signs. The question is, do we want those?
In residential.
In residential. Yeah. If you had just a single story house, wouldn't be any problem, but you know.
You can't discriminate. I mean. You can't discriminate because of the lot size or the house size.
Yes, you can easily discriminate if you, if you say, you know, uh, certain square footage or the face. Then yes, it's gonna be. I mean, yeah, I mean, a smaller house is gonna have a smaller sign. Right? So I guess you could call that discrimination source. You're small, you're gonna have a small sign.
I think Commissioner Hahn, what you said earlier about if you're a resident, then you can have your sign, temporary sign for seven days, right? So if that's the rule. Residents can have a temporary sign for seven days. If a resident wants a sign for longer than seven days, then they have to comply. With the rest of the regulations, right? So you have your huge graduation sign, your neighbor hates it, but it's gonna be gone in a week before the mail even gets to you telling you to remove it. So we just allow that because you're, you're right, your average person isn't going to ask that. So that. Take that out of it. And then if you want to have a sign up for thirty days or three months, now it's impacting your neighbor a lot more for a longer period of time. And so you're gonna have to comply. With the percentages and we can provide graphics and tables to go along with that. Does that sound fair?
Sounds fair to me. Yes, please.
Sounds fair to me. I would still like to know the answer to the question of the process that the code violation letters. Because it's no good if you have it for, let's say. Well, if it's, if you're saying kind of like seven, seven days, right? But somebody complains and then you get a letter. Well, it's one thing if they say we're fining you, we looked at your sign or we saw a picture that your neighbor sent us. And not, you don't get a chance to cure by taking it down. You might've already cured, but they automatically slap a fine. I don't think that's necessarily what we want either. I just just like to know kind of what the steps are leading up to a fine.
I can work with code compliance to.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm sorry to put more.
That's totally fine.
Thank you.
Okay, so, all right, so let's try and figure out which direction we want to go in. So now it sounds as though we want to break things down by district.
And then I think this solution where you allow it for seven days in a, and we can clarify, we say residential only or. On a residential lot. Then that allows you to not have to break it by district. It's just this one thing is allowed. Almost, it's almost actually an exempt, in exempt signs rather than.
But what if you have a mixed use where people live upstairs, the business is downstairs? We've got a couple of those across again from Commissioner Ruckey's house. What do you do then?
That it has to be the only use on the lot is residential. So if the lot.
So that has to be. Written somewhere.
Okay, if you, if you have your residence above your business and your child is graduating, you're not going to be able to use, you're gonna have to get a. Either comply or get a permit. But everyone else can put their graduation. Sign up.
So you're saying if it's mixed use, you had, you can have the commercial, like I'm thinking of that house with the window, uh, the window store.
Right, the brick wall used to, corner.
And yes, and, um, you have the commercial banner downstairs or whatever for the commercial use, the signage. But the guy upstairs can't have signage for happy graduation, you know, Bradley.
Right.
So you can't have different signage for the different uses within the same lot. Mr. Larry.
Because then you are gonna have to regulate the content of the sign. Because.
I mean, we need some help here.
If.
Yes.
If you allow.
Okay.
If you allow the seven day exemption. Where there's a commercial and a residential use and we're not regulating the content of the sign, which is a goal. Then they can put sale on windows today and leave it up for seven days and it's exempt. So unfortunately Bradley, who lives upstairs, can't. Put his graduation sign.
Okay.
There.
Okay. Okay, because they've maxed out. Their commercial signage or their commercial, their usage of signs or their ability to have more signs.
Because they're a commercial zone, so they don't get a seven day exemption.
Oh, okay, 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 I got it, okay. Okay, so let's, let's, let's roll this in then, so. What are your thoughts about then delineating by district? Delineating by temporary versus permanent? And being more specific as far as how many days and what size and all that? Should we just go back and start from square one on that one then?
For each type of sign?
For each zone, for each zone, basically.
Each zone that's not an HOA.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, but for any kind of sign.
But I guess.
So we'd have. We have to go through every kind of sign?
Well, every. Um, well, temporary versus commercial, yeah.
So I think we're back to this, or this organization question, right? Um, that, you know, both work, right? Are we organizing by here's your total area sign, do with it what you will? Or are we saying? These are the signs you can have and this is. How, how big they can be.
In this area.
In each area. Or it.
But are we gonna go with percentages again? Or are we gonna go with?
Well, I think first we just want to figure out first the format.
Cause right, so we had this format. Like three months ago and that's okay. And so this is this new format. And so the question for the commission, right, is which format? Do you want? Both of them can work, but I think we need to choose one.
Yeah, we obviously need to now.
Change, we changed to what we have today based on Mrs. Weaver's, Commissioner Weaver's. She's gone for the next month, so then.
Signage.
Can have chickens on that.
Hey, yeah.
Intentional joke. That's good.
Pretty funny.
Yes.
Say. Okay.
What is simpler for the, the commercial, I'm not worried about the commercial people. I'm worried about the homeowner. That is gonna do something and their, their knowledge of signs and whether it's percentage and all that stuff. It's more complicated than, than I think it should be.
We have, do we have that problem now?
Well, as, I mean, for.
We have that problem now with residential areas with signs and.
I was gonna say, we had code enforcement in front of us telling us what issues they've seen.
I would say don't fix it if it isn't broke.
Break it and then fix it.
That's, that's the optimist, optimist's way of looking at it. I always look at this, this job as, you know, what's the worst thing that could happen? Cause it will happen, you know, the worst thing will always happen.
You want to tell everybody what they can do. I want to let them do what they want essentially within certain bounds.
Well, that's the question. What are the bounds?
So you sound like a percentage guy then? I mean, that's, 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 I mean, that's what we defined, right? Like.
I like the code the way it's written. And in the board.
He likes the original code.
The original code.
Okay.
I don't, I don't see a problem that I'm fixing here.
Right.
Except that we do have new types of signs. We have, when that thing was written. We didn't, we didn't have the feather signs. We didn't have the EMCs like we have today. We, um, you know, we have a lot more abuses. We have, we've had a lot of abuses with, um, our political signs. We've had, I mean, there was just, there's a lot of things that we need to fine tune. It's been complicated. She had three people in here today not understanding how that, that sign code reads and not understanding what, you know? It's not really very well written. We're trying to make it simpler for the layperson or the, the business person.
They're trying to make it simpler.
Well, you know, this is, this was the goal. Was to make it simpler and to make it more readable.
Sausage.
But I mean, you know, if you go and read this again, you'll go, there's a lot of, um, miss, you know, you, you, you can interpret it in so many different ways. And we want to make it less confusing, I think. And you're, you're right, maybe we're not making it, uh, simpler.
Tough.
I do think though, when I look at like St. Michael's, it's a lot more specific and a lot more understandable. And you go, well, what's five percent? What's, yeah, okay, well, they have actually, uh, numbers. They have so many square feet of sign, whatever. I think personally in residential, there shouldn't be any signs except for a temporary banner that's up for seven days and that's it. So I, I could see, or I mean, if they want their little name plate, they can do that, but you know, I don't think we even need to write that in. I think that's gonna go anyway. But I think there shouldn't be any signage in residential unless it's like a temporary ba- banner or, you know, congratulations or whatever it is you're gonna put up there, but.
What else, what else, what else were we thinking about? I mean, we've got the political signs covered, the real estate signs covered. Right, but what else would someone in a residential area, except that they wanted to name their house or something? But other than that, what would you possibly?
Except for the RV two, which is residential and.
Just talking strictly residential.
Residential, which would be the other residences, um, in, so there's, you know, probably twenty percent of the homes here. I would say, yeah, I can't think of anything else.
Well, there are political signs, there are congratulation kind of sign.
That's the banners, right?
Not here in town, but some divorced people signs. Pretty ugly.
Yeah, they can get ugly. Yeah, you can get. Um, but. You know, maybe Commissioner Brown is right. We don't really even need to address it. Maybe it just takes care of itself because people complain, hey, neighbor, please take that down. But maybe we don't even need to address it.
Have we had a lot of complaints?
So I was, do you guys remember this? This was the commercial, um, signs. And we went through all the ones that were non-compliant. Um, we didn't actually, I can, I can make it bigger. So this.
The non-compliant signs.
The non-compliant signs are in commercial zones.
The non-compliant signs will continue to exist. As long as they ask for a permit. That's what this says, right?
So in our new. Regulations.
They continue to exist the way they are. As long as they ask for a permit. So new businesses will be restricted, but the old businesses won't.
So, yes, what? If, if we don't do anything to allow electronic, if we don't make any changes to allow things like electronic signs, then. And we allow the non-conforming signs to come in, then we're basically. It incentivizing just installing a sign without a permit. And then getting a permit later. Because the town doesn't want to ask you to remove your, right, to remove your sign. Which, I mean, that it'll, would have, we'd have to do that moving forward. But I think it's better to regulate the signs and allow them so that there's some. Regulations around them because you, you have the flashing blinking issue. If we don't address it, then we're still gonna have the flashing blinking issue and we're incentivizing.
Where do we have a flashing blinking issue?
The Sitco does that occasionally. The American Legion has a pretty quick change over.
That's every.
Traders in the school, right?
And the.
Somebody else could.
Rod and real, yeah.
Well, that's the.
Rod and real moves pretty slow.
That's the problem.
Where?
Rod and real moves pretty slow. Um, I don't know if you were here for this.
It was like the three second to five second, whatever timeline.
Larry, I also think though that, don't we also have to maybe look a little bit to the future and say? With changes in signs, people, uh, new businesses. We don't have certain regulations.
We have regulations.
Okay, but I also think like with the, the lighting, I don't, and I don't recall all of this offhand, but. You know, about kind of like light pollution, like where, you know, with your spotlights or something. So, um, I do think it's good to put some kind of modern interpretation tweaks. But and if I understand.
To the existing.
Well, I mean, at the very least, because there, you know, people will march up to the line. Some people will. You know, do a leap across it. Some people will do just a little toe, but I think that we have to. Keep up with the times.
For example, if you look at commercial districts and that area that she has in Bold, that's currently in our current code, correct? That's a word for word from our current code. And if you read.
Modified a little bit, yes.
It is pretty confusing, actually. It starts out with the total area of all visible signs on a building, its windows or any other area of lot, et cetera, et cetera. Cannot exceed fifteen percent. Then the next thing says. Um, the total area of all such signage shall not cover more than fifteen percent of the windows total area. So the problem is, is that this is so confusing as it's written, as it was written. That this is why we have to try and make it simpler and mean the same kind of thing. So if you can take what that says and make it mean the same thing, then we've done our job. So we're talking temporary commercial and, yes, still temporary commercial. And they're talking, um, the visible signs on the building, including its windows. And everything else on the, on the building face. The, um, it can't exceed fifteen percent of the total. I, it should say the total square footage. It doesn't say, it says total of each street facing side of the, see, that's not even written very well, so you can't even understand what it means. It says. The total area of all visible signs on a building, it should have a comma, its windows, comma, or any other area of a lot or combination of lots that make up a single property, comma. Shall not exceed fifteen percent of the total of each street facing side of the building. They should say total square footage or total something. I mean, there, there's just words left out and. And then of course you go down and they, they cover windows again. And so you're, are you saying, are you adding the fifteen percent of that fifteen percent or what do you, what are you saying here? So again. We have to, um.
You're reading from the old code or from?
Yes, that is, that is the old code. What we're reading is the old code.
Where is it in the old code?
I don't know that it's exactly.
Is this not the old code?
It's based on the old code.
Oh.
And our conversation. I have the old code. You probably can't read this, though.
What you're saying, I don't.
Thought this was the old code that we were trying to revise, but, uh, maybe you've already rewritten some of it. I don't know. But anyway, the point is we've got a, what if? Take a look at it and see what, where it says anything. Okay, so.
You read it now.
Now that we're not getting anywhere on this one temporary situation. Now that we're not getting anywhere on this one temporary situation here. Then we have the question, okay, let's go to one more issue since we can't even figure that issue out. Then we get into the permitted versus non-permitted issues. If you go down to the bottom of our page, um, 15, it says number two, allowed without a permit. A frames, turn the page, banners, feather flag signs, flags, pennant streamers, yard signs, realis-, well, they don't have real estate in here, but probably real estate should have been in there. I don't know. But, but the question is, I guess, real estate does. You could have some real estate signs in commercial. Um, how do we want to look at those as being permitted or not permitted? Do we not want feather flag signs permitted? Or do we just want them every five feet on certain businesses? Or do we not care? Do we want any size banners or do we care? Um, what if somebody has a banner and they leave it up all year and they make it a, a, a temporary sign into a permanent sign? Cause basically, there's no permit, so we're not really following its length of term. So how do we want to look at that as an issue? Permits versus no permits. So in other words, number two, those are all, uh, signs that are allowed without a permit. We want to permit them. So we have more control over the length of time they're up. I've noticed that feather flag signs are commonly used, of course, now, and they're used almost as a permanent sign. They're in addition to what they have, you know, otherwise. So do we really not want to permit them? Or do we want them every 10 feet? Or do they, I mean, some towns actually have pages of just how you handle flag, those feather flag signs. What does everybody think about that issue?
Current code says permit requirements for signs. No on premises sign over four square feet in area. No off premises sign except government signs. Of any size shall be erected, affixed, painted, hung, or otherwise displayed, altered, or repaired unless a permit therefore has been issued. No permit shall be required for the repainting or repairing of a sign which conforms to the provisions of this chapter. Signs on theaters, advertising changes in programs should not require permits except for the initial installation thereof. All signs of any size must comply with all the regulations contained herein irrespective of whether a permit is required.
Um.
And it goes on to signs permitted in residential areas and signs permitted in commercial districts.
Actually, does everybody have their zoning code books with them?
I don't have mine, but I'm.
I am.
Chris is sharing.
I am putting it up here if you can read, got it as big as I can get it.
Excellent. If you could, you know what? Maybe we need to just take it from the old book as, as, um, we're looking at it here. They may actually have, uh, better standards than we thought. If you go to F, signs permitted in residential districts. Are you at F?
Yeah.
We're in F.
Well, look on the board up there, uh.
That's F, the F, I just moved the F over so you can see more of the words.
Oh. So on premises, so it says on premises sign. Um, if you want to read through that, maybe we just, uh, if you go down to F, they actually have 100 square feet. They actually have s- specific numbers, which I do like.
I do think like on C, when it talks about illuminated, that might be where we want to maybe just kind of enlarge that to talk about some of those um, other impeding traffic or just the other things that we had about.
But, yeah.
How, how bright, how it shines, just those things.
Hmm. So, um, you want to put in, you want to make it more specific as far as what the illumination would be?
I, I mean, I think it's not a bad idea because, um, if someone's gotten, well, hard because I live in it with an HOA and I can't imagine illuminated light, but let's say someone's got illuminated light for their Christmas display. Um, and they think it's wonderful and you find that it's shining in your front window, something. I, I do think it's important that we.
There'd be some direction to the consumers.
Just a little bit because I think we know more now about light pollution than perhaps when this was written, just.
Since we have the details, we've already got that in this, in this new code. We can probably add that.
I mean, and realistically, following up with what you said, should there be a timing? Like after 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock, they shouldn't be, they should automatically be turned off so that they're not disturbing.
Because it's re- residential. Okay, so add times. Okay.
So then like the birds and the people.
Right, the birds.
Maybe what we should do is, now that you can see it up there on.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah. Jan, can you see that? Okay, up there? If you can.
What do you want us, what's?
First of all, look at signs permitted in residential districts. I think it's not a bad idea that we look at districts and they've got it actually, um, they've actually got it out here pretty specifically. I think it's, it's pretty good. Um, except that it might be a little wordy. For example, um, E, which is the real estate one. Uh, I don't know if we need to have so much written. Um, it's just basically the real, but maybe we do. I don't know. Maybe we do. Um, and actually it's pretty complete when you think about that. But I think you're right about C. C needs to be added to as far as the lighting's concerned. And advertising the development of a property. Okay. What else in residential? Is there anything else? You know, the other thing they don't have on residential is if you wanted to have the little residential house signs. Naming your house and that. I know that in some towns they have that. Do we need to add that? Like any sign under a certain square footage, we don't worry about at all? Or does it matter? Eh, I guess it wouldn't matter because if these are permitted, what the heck? I don't think it really.
The existing code says two square feet.
Were you reading that?
For lines permitted in residential districts. Line indicating the name or number of the building or premises shall, or the accessory use of a dwelling for home occupation provided such shine shall not exceed two square feet. Not more than one such shine shall be erected.
I, I happen to like how this is actually, you know, pretty fairly complete. It kind of handles everything that we were talking about with residential. What does everybody else think about it? Anything that needs to be changed or added?
I would need to reread it simply because we were going in another direction.
Yeah, I know. Commissioner Brown is saying, I think this looks like pretty much covering what we were talking about right there. Yeah. I mean, F signs permitted in residential districts.
I mean, I'm, I'm good with everything. The only thing is, I would have C, if it's like an illuminated a sign that there should, it should go off at a certain time. So depending on how bright it is, it doesn't affect other residents.
Right. Let's, let's, um, what would you say? 10 o'clock? Off at 10 o'clock? On at 8 o'clock?
What is the noise ordinance? Isn't it 10?
What is what?
Noise.
10 o'clock, yeah.
Yeah, then let's stick with it. It'll be easy to remember.
Oh, in that section are we also going to talk about, oh, this is residential.
Yes.
And if you go on to, um, you're on, is the bottom one E? Yes, E. Can you scroll down and go to G through J? There's more on this. There's G through J, temporary contractors, architects or building signs. And then H is traffic control and directional signs. Trespassing signs.
If you, it, it's up now. Just trying to find it in here.
Yeah. And then J is temporary signage, announcing a campaign, et cetera. Um.
That can't exceed 12 square feet. Oh, yeah, that's got numbered days and.
Yeah, I think that, that is, for residential, I think that is pretty good, actually. Even have a thing for off premises signs. Okay, interesting. Anything else that needs to be added to this or?
Other than the lighting.
Pretty complete.
Issue.
Okay, the one thing that they don't have is if you want to put a ban, a temporary uh, banner up or something like that, you know, those big banners that we were talking about in.
In here.
Yeah, does it? Does it? It's actually, um, you know, if you want to put up one of these congratulation banners that are like huge. And I, it's so rare that you get those and it's usually at a certain times of the year, but do we need to add that or is it a big deal, big problem?
I'm wondering on J.
I was gonna say, can we add it in J? I was thinking temporary signs announcing a campaign, drive or event of a civic, philanthropic, educational or religious organization. Or could we put in there?
Personal or.
What if?
Congratulatory.
Celebratory.
What if it didn't say anything about the content of the sign? What if it just said temporary signs?
Oh.
Not how you do it, temporary signs.
Good idea.
About temporary announcement signs or something to identify what we're talking, maybe guiding them towards temporary signs. Okay, let's just say temporary signs. How about that?
The non-scarilla's nature.
Well, I mean, do you.
I was just kidding.
Signs. Uh, other, should we just say other temporary signs or announcement signs? Should we call them announcement signs?
Other makes, comes it up.
Well, you could say other signs such as, for example, to include but not limited to, happy birthday, congratulations on the baby, the store dropped off the delivery. You know.
You're an attorney, right?
Yes.
Okay. We could.
But you don't want to. Yeah.
How about just say, uh, uh, put all those in and then, or a celebration or, you know, how about a celebration? We can do, just put a celebratory sign. Can we just add that and that'll be done? We'll, we'll put Ms. Franklin on that one. Okay, so let's go to G. Now that we've kind of figured out that we like F, okay, let's go to G, which is signs permitted in the commercial districts. Let's see how they did do it. It's, looks like it's pretty similar to how we're looking at it right now, actually. Can you scroll to the next group, which is signs permitted in the commercial districts? On premises signs. All signs permitted in subsection F at the standards prescribed therein, except as otherwise provided in this subsection. That sounds a little confusing.
But that's good. Then we beef up the part about the lighting and everything. In F.
Yes, that's true. Oh, except, let's see, all signs permitted in subsection F at the standards prescribed therein, except as otherwise provided in this section. Okay. Signs for permitted non-residential uses provided. Let me get back to the 10%. But that's, 10% is easier to discern. Can everybody read what's going on with one? I don't have to read it out loud so you can. Everybody like the percentage down there? 10, they go.
This is where that language came.
Yeah, I know. I understand. This is where it came from. I got it. So does everybody like the way it's written in the old? Oh, wait a minute.
Or 100 square feet. So I think that's limited. If, if, if the building's big, then whichever comes first is the 10% or the 100 square feet.
Mm-hmm.
That's what you're limited to.
And is this for the commercial? You know, with the, sometimes they'll use those signs that are on like, you know, like a little, um, like a trailer kind of thing with the wheels. I don't, I don't know if that, this, I, I don't know if we have to even address that. I don't know if that's included.
Well, you're talking temporary sign. Talking about temporary sign, right?
But this is just on premises. So I, I don't know. I'm just, it's.
Oh, these are, we're talking permanent signs. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait. Okay, I'm getting confused. Are these signs that need a permit or they're just allowed in residential? Going back to F. Those are signs that are allowed in residential districts without a permit, correct?
Oh, they needed permits? Standards are different. Permit requirements.
So, so F requires a permit.
Yeah, sign is permitted.
Why does it keep doing that?
Well, I mean, it's allowed, not that you need a permit.
So the permit requirements are any on premises sign that's over four square, four square feet in area. Any off premises sign. Um, though, all those things, those, those two things need permit. The only thing that doesn't need a permit is an on premises sign under four square feet. Right?
Okay, so F then would require permits. That would require permit.
And I think it did state that.
Signs requiring a permit.
In residential districts.
It almost looks like it's signs allowed.
That's right. That's how I read it.
We need to change how that's, okay, see, that confused. Me. So, all right, so signs allowed with permit. Should we want to say it that way or?
Can you give me a reference to which?
E, F, I'm sorry, we're on F, where it says signs permitted in residential districts. Let's go back to that. We need to say it more specifically. Signs allowed with permit. If we want to permit all this, right? We want to.
Mm-hmm.
Well, that means that anybody who wants to go in with.
I would say permits required for the following signs.
Yes.
In residential districts.
Yes. Say that again.
Permits required for the following signs in residential districts.
Well, do we want to start out with residential districts? That people under, you know, do you, how do you?
I mean, you can put residential district, colon.
Let's do that. Resident, let's start out because then, then people, when they look at a certain area, they go, okay, this is residential, residential district.
And then permits required.
Permits required, permitted, permits required.
As follows or, yeah.
Or something like, right?
I am. I'm slower this way.
Yes, you are, I've noticed.
You just take your time, Sarah. She goes like. Her typing, which is like the wind is what you meant to say.
To say that, but I didn't.
So residential districts, colon, permit required.
That's right. I think we need to start out with, uh, the districts. So it's not confusing.
Think so, because then people couldn't go on in a residence.
Okay, districts, bam, commercial districts, bam. Okay, good. Permits required.
It should be illuminated. You know.
Like a dictionary.
Like a bigger font size. When you read statutes.
For the three devil children down on there.
They are the devil right down there. Okay. So far, e- except that we haven't tidied it, we haven't consolidated, made it smaller, but I guess, you know, it says, it says what it says and Commissioner Brown likes it. Let's just keep. Okay, so we've now got a new title. We, we're gonna change number C or letter C to add, uh, more about the illumination and the times for like, uh, they should be off at 10, back on at eight or whatever it is we want to do with 10 to eight in the morning or something like that, right? Is that what we decided? 10 to 8 in the morning or? Is that what we decided? 10 to 8 in the morning or something like, 7 in the morning? I don't care. It's illumination, who cares about the daytime, but off at 10. Let's just say off at 10.
People might.
Not remain lit beyond.
Yeah, but someone like, but if you, if you don't delineate the hour, someone could say, I'm gonna put it on at 3:00 in the morning. You know what I'm saying, like.
Oh, so you didn't have a time period?
Yes, I just think someone tried to find a way to be cute about it.
No lights between when and when?
Well, do the quiet hours.
Yeah, which are what?
I don't know, start, it starts like.
7 to 7, 10 to 7.
10 PM to 7 or something like that.
10 PM to 7 AM, okay.
And 7 AM, whatever.
That's probably pretty good for the environment too. It's probably a good, good idea, even though it's a little bit, I know that.
I'm just thinking it's easier to remember. But then again, I can't remember what time the bad hours are.
Okay, I like it.
Are you talking about turning the lighted signs off?
We're talking about in residential areas, if they have like holiday lights or, yeah.
Illuminated signs.
If they have, they, they apparently can have some illuminated signs in their residential areas, I don't know.
Man, you're, you're walking Home Depot and they've got a huge aisle of solar lights that you, you can do. You've got lighted, you've got lights that when you.
On motion.
Buy.
Oh. Oh, that's, he's right.
That's not an illuminated sign.
That's.
Those are just.
But some, my neighbor leaves her, her lights on her garage all night long. I don't care.
Like a fully dark neighborhood. They're talking, this is talking about an illuminated sign. And I guess the question is, what kind of signs in residential areas are we talking about that would be illuminated?
I thought we were talking about holiday lights and that, that with a, whatever those things are called.
Spotlights?
Thank you. That's what I thought we were talking. I don't know what other kind of illuminated sign anybody would have in a residential area myself.
That's not really a sign, it's more part of an artistic display as opposed to for safety of your home and neighborhood. Some people, I mean, have even like lights, you know, that move, like a spotlight.
Do we care? I mean, everybody was talking about how they didn't care about the holiday lights, maybe we, do we care if they're turned off? I don't. I don't think we care about that. They're talking about illuminating a sign. So I guess the question is, which kind of signs are we talking about? Trespassing signs, can't, signs on campaigns or civic events or, I don't know.
But let's say, let's say someone has a political sign and they happen to have moved their solar lights a little closer, but they, I think it's, maybe it is too much to regulate. I mean, because a solar light could, could be for, you know, their dog has to go out in 3:00 in the morning. There's the light and it happens to light up the political sign, that's just a natural consequence. I was thinking more of just the ones where people have these roving spotlights at holiday times, because everything's gotten so much more intricate and complex with lights. I think those were the kinds that I was more concerned about, this kind of roving spotlight kind. If that would keep going and it might create something with a neighbor visually.
Well, I think the way they have it written probably is adequate. A sign if illuminated shall be indirectly lit and no flashing lights or backlit signs shall be permitted. Does flashing mean also, you know, rotating and, do you just want to add in there rotating or do you want to add in something other than flashing?
I guess.
Remember, this is on a sign, we're talking a sign, so I'm just, you know, what, what would people do?
Still residential, it's a sign, but that's off topic, I thought.
Can we not put something in there just for? Maybe I'm thinking it's a problem and it's not, but you know, just like, I don't know if you remember, but like those, those, at the holiday time, there might be a reindeer or a Santa Claus in CVS, I remembered it. And it sang like the same tinny Christmas carol in this cartoony voice and, you know, a lot of people want to shoot the reindeer because it wouldn't stop. And sometimes people have that in their display and it could be, you know what I'm saying? That's all I'm saying is that.
But that is sound, not light, but I got it, I understand.
Annoying, annoyance face, right, right.
Well, I mean, I mean, I think those are one of those situations where, you know, they're gonna come up occasionally, but I don't know if you need to write a code around it, I mean.
That, 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 that makes sense as well to me.
I agree with you.
Yeah, neighborhood things where you go and tap on their door and go, you know, that's kind of annoying. Does anybody disagree? Do you think we need to add a line in here that would take the annoyance away from lighting? Because we're not talking sound, we're just talking.
Right, no, but I meant just sort of the holidays, everything gets.
It does get a little celebratory, what can I tell you?
That's okay.
Okay, I think, is everybody happy with F as it is now? If we, if we're going back to C, do we really need to do anything with the illumination after all, or can we just go with the entire F as it was?
I don't know enough about lighting.
Well, the saying that the sign can't actually be lit, it's gotta be indirectly hit.
Right, 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 right. I just, I just don't know about, because there was so much, you know, how bright.
We were talking lumens.
Do you want to, do you want to add in a sign, something that says and may not, what is the term? Not filter off into another neighbor's yard or may not disturb neighboring yards or neighbor, neighbors? You want to put something like that in there? May not?
And, and then again, I mean, it's hard because solar, you know, like solar lights will go on and I think that's okay, you know? So maybe you don't put anything more in there.
I think for, for residential areas, the signs that are lit aren't signs on people's individual residential lots, they're the HOA signs, right?
You mean like, don't park here, you mean like?
When you go into the HOA, I guess I haven't, I'm not in an angle to notice when I go out, but like, did Richfield Station have lights on their sign as you go?
The main sign on the, on the, as we were coming down the road.
We have that in Bayview Hills too.
Lights on there to illuminate.
I think that's really what this is referring to, because most people in their yard aren't putting in a sign and then lighting it. It's really signs that exist in residential districts because they're an entrance sign more than.
Okay, then I think, I think it may be fine the way it is, because we have them too in Bayview Hills, but they don't face into anyone's, your, you know, window.
Well, do you want to have something like that and may not shine into any other residential or any neighboring windows? Do you want to just add a simple phrase like that?
I think it would be all right.
Why don't we just add that? Just may not, lighting may not into neighboring, yeah, or something, may not shine into other residential.
Ocean detector lights already.
Yeah.
But those aren't signs, so those aren't.
That's right, that's right, I'm sorry.
Quick sand around here.
Now, if you continue on to the signs permitted in the commercial districts. Oh, I know, I was gonna, before we go on to that. There is nothing about temporary versus permanent signs, is there? Or did I not see? I haven't seen it. So what this doesn't do is delineate between permanent and temporary, which is, they do have on F, you know, F down below, a temporary sign advertising, they do have some temporary mixed in. So how they do it here is they mix it all in, yes. So going to G, signs permitted in the commercial districts. Signs for permitted non-residential uses, signs for permitted residential uses provided the aggregate area of all signs attached to or printed on a wall shall not exceed 10% of the area of the building face to which they are attached and painted, or 100 square feet, whichever is less. So basically, this is more restrictive than what, what, this is even more restrictive. That's pretty funny, actually. And they have freestanding signs identifying a single building or its business or a shopping center in accordance with the following schedule, and then you can all read what the schedule is. That seems fairly logical.
I just want to clarify that it's not necessarily that it's less restrictive, but because we were combining attached signs and detached signs, I changed it to 15%.
Oh, I see, I see, I see, okay, okay, okay. Okay, so then they have the freestanding signs identifying a single building or its business or a shopping center in accordance with the following schedule. The area of any freestanding sign shall not exceed one square foot for each linial foot of street frontage occupied by the use on which or in connection with which the sign is to be erected, but in no case shall the area of the sign exceed 100 square feet. How does that sound to everybody? Does everybody understand that? Does it make sense to you? So where would, okay.
Street fundage, okay.
Can I just?
Yes.
Under B1, the last sentence does not, the last line does not make sense to me. When it says the area of the building face to which they are attached and painted, should that be or? Well, okay, thank you.
You say, B, would you say B?
B1.
B1?
Under G.
Under G, the aggregate area of all signs attached to or printed on a wall shall not exceed 10% of the area of the building face to which they are attached and painted. Or 100 square feet, whichever is less.
So they're, they're saying if they painted the sign on the building, not just attached it, but possibly done a mural or.
But isn't that or? I, I, this.
We want a comma in there to separate painted and or?
No, no, it's attached, saying it's attached and painted.
Right, is.
Or.
Comma, or 100 square feet, whichever is less. So that's why I'm saying a comma after.
No, I'm saying it should be attached or painted, because a sign might not be.
Oh, I, to which they are attached.
Might be, it might be like a illuminated or it might be something else and not painted.
Would that be like a?
I don't know.
Painted on the wall?
Yeah, I, I just got.
You just died? What did you just say?
Oh, I.
So to which they are attached and/or painted? Or how do you want to reword that to make sense of it?
All signs to or printed on a building. We'll see when it says in the first one, of the aggregate area of all signs attached to or printed on a building. So I think then that the last sentence should also then say attached to or printed.
Oh, you think instead of painted, it should be printed?
I just think that should be consistent with the first sentence.
Makes sense, that's what they were trying to say. The aggregate area of all signs attached to or printed on a building shall not exceed 10% of the area of the building face to which they are.
Well, I think we just say the building face, I don't.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, maybe we should take out that.
Yes.
The aggregate sign, the aggregate area of all signs attached to or printed on a building shall not exceed 10% of the area of the building face.
Or 100 square feet, whichever is less.
Okay, I like that. Did you get that, Ms. Franklin? She's lost, I think we lost her. She's not adjusting anymore, she's dead.
So, so the aggregate area of all signs attached to or printed on a building shall not exceed 10%
Of the area.
Of the area.
Of the building.
The building.
Or. Yeah, of the building face, right?
Yeah, that's, building face, yeah.
We're deleting or which they are attached.
To which they are attached or painted.
Right.
Right.
Got it.
Or the building face. Or 100 square feet, whichever is less. Okay, I think that does, you know what, that made that a lot clearer, actually, now that you mention it. Okay, that was, okay, so, good. Now, if you keep going down, I think we've, we've agreed that number G, B2 is okay, correct? Total square footage, I mean, frontage, excuse me. So for 1,000, 1 to 1,000 is one freestanding sign. And then anything larger can have two. So does that include the feather sign or not? Is that free, is it a flag, a feather flag, is that a freestanding or what is that?
My, my understanding is the intent of this, what, what this is trying to do is give you your American Legion sign or your sign over at the shopping center that has the different businesses listed. So, or at Sitco, the one that, or Traders, there's the standing up sign that's in the parking lot, not the one attached to the, so you can attach to the building and then you can have this additional sign. This isn't really talking about temporary signs.
Okay, so these are talking permanent signs.
It doesn't say that, but that's how I would interpret it.
So should we say signs? Okay, should we go back to G and change that title to conform to the residential district?
Yes.
So let's put commercial district, colon. Commercial districts.
Permit required.
And it signs as comlin, I think, or something like that.
I have written, commercial district permit required.
Permits required. Okay. All right, so these are permanent signs. So where do we add the temporary sign here? Do we want to add that as number 2A? Or what do we want to do here?
They're kind of dealt with.
How do we want to do temporary signs?
Here, here they are, they're here, they're 14, so they're H, general sign regulations. 14, all portable signs shall be limited as follows.
Okay, all portable signs shall be limited as follows.
Do we want to add something when they talk about searchlights? Is that where we kind of put in some more defining language about the lumens and about, I don't know if that's appropriate or not.
We want searchlights.
But I think, well.
We're going to.
We're out too.
We don't have to have hot air balloons or searchlights if you don't want to. I mean, the problem with hot air balloons, and we were talking about that before, how do you? What kind of safety is involved with the hot air balloons? What kind of device do you use to create the hot air? I mean, is there safety, is there? I mean, it's only gonna be for 72, 72 hours in a year, I got it, but is this something that we need to have in this little tiny town? Is a hot air balloon? And do we need a searchlight in this tiny little town? I mean, I just don't think we need either one of those, and I would say we, I say personally, I would put them as prohibited.
Because searchlights when you're driving could be distracting, you know, if you're driving.
Yeah, and you just don't need, you know, it's too small.
I think it's like FBI and drive here.
With all the birds that we have and whatnot, it's confusing and blah, blah, blah. I say we, the hot air balloons and the searchlights, we prohibit.
Yeah.
Anybody disagree with that idea? He doesn't care, okay. Okay, let's put that as prohibit. Pennants and banners with no words or advertising are permitted for a display period until 14 days to an event and not to exceed 30 days per year.
Oh, they're just like the, you know, those, just.
But when, how do you have a banner without a word on it, though?
I guess it could have, it, it, like, if.
A symbol.
Right, it might not be advertising, but you might have Christmas trees on it or, you know. Well, I'm just saying for decoration, no, 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 I'm saying for a store, let's say that the antiques. Oh, God, now she's gonna. Oh, God, now she's going to. Don't mean to.
I don't care if there are words on it. I mean, if you're.
Right, right. I don't care also.
Saying, let's allow, allow them words. So I would cross out the with no words or advertising. Does anybody?
No problem.
Yeah. Turn with that? So let's cross out the with no words or advertising part of it. Pennants and banners are permitted for display periods not to exceed 14 days prior to an event, not to exceed 30 days. I think that sounds great.
Me too.
C, one sandwich type A-frame sign is permitted per business on premises subject to the following. And I think this all looks good. What is called for in the Town Road Ordinance? Okay, we don't know what that is. We'll have to.
Maybe you want to have that.
Number three, do we want to?
I'm pretty sure I checked it and that's where I came up with the.
Visibility thing?
No, I think it's how I identified that the A-frames over at Sitco were where they didn't need to be. But I don't remember because this was several months ago when I did that. So I'll, I'll have to go back and look at it, but.
But I think that someone's not going to know what the Town Ordinance is. So it might be good just if it's easily collapsed and readable. I think it should be in three.
Yeah, so in other words, spell it out. In other words. Okay, so, so on number three, Ms. Franklin, if you could put that information as to what the Town Road Ordinance is or kind of, you know, summarize it and put it in there, that'd be great.
Well, on number three, we, I thought the last time we talked about this, we didn't want sidewalk, you know, those A-frame signs can very easily go on a sidewalk. So maybe we could say can't restrict sight difference or?
Well, they shouldn't be on the sidewalk, though, because.
Oh, well, maybe we should include that as number.
I'm pretty sure that's in the.
In that Town Road Ordinance.
Right.
So it's not allowed on private public property or public right of way, et cetera. Okay, you know what? If, can you bring back the language with that next time so we can look at that?
Yes. I want to make sure I understand. So basically, take the existing sign ordinance, pop it into a Word doc and make the edits that we made tonight. Should I add the electronic sign EMC regulations?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
I thought, though, just going back about the Town Road Ordinance, that you would put language under.
We're talking about three, yeah.
Yeah, with three, what that Town Ordinance.
Yes, sorry, I got that.
I just want to make sure that was on the list.
Yes, thank you. I just want to make sure I bring you what you're asking for. So that's why I want to. So I'll bring the existing sign ordinance and I'll incorporate the EMCs. The thing about incorporating the EMCs, no, that's in there. Okay, so I have to check if the illumination standards with the lumens, like, those are tied to the EMCs. So they may need to come in two, but they can come in in a separate place.
In, in this electronic messaging centers, B1C talks about Section J. There is no Section J.
The page.
Yes.
Page 19.
All the references are going to have to be updated. All the references are going to have to be updated.
And then on the next page, it has prohibited, that's the top of the page, page 20.
This EMC.
The transition time between messages and message frames may employ either instantaneous page resolve or other transitional effects. Not prohibited in H4. No H4.
Right, so.
You'll just have to find them.
So all of the references, I think most of the references broke when the whole thing got reorganized. But rather than continuing to do that, I've kind of just kept track of them. And once we finalize everything, I can get the references in.
Landing it all. Are, are you going to add Section I violations?
Yes, we've got to go over that. We haven't gone over that yet. We have to go over violations. We have to go over. Actually, we're not, we're, let's see, violations.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understand. Are, are we using this? Which, which ordinance am I using?
The current Town Council Ordinance that we
Right.
are using currently, we just looked over and I think we all agreed that the F is looking very good, which is the, now the residential districts colon permits required. And the G is very good. And I think we should keep that with some of the changes that we've made, including the language for the Town Road Ordinance. And we want to prohibit the hot air balloons and searchlights. I also think we should add a few more things to 14, all portable signs. I think we should, if we go to what Sarah has written up here, if we go to number 14, I think we should make some more changes to the all portable signs shall be limited to or shall be limited as follows. I think we should, that's where we need to put in. We've also got all of our exempt, we've got to put in our exempt stuff that we've come up and all that. But I think we should also put in like no snipe signs. The snipe signs are the ones that you put on telephone poles and rocks and, you know, those should be prohibited. And those are considered temporary signs, but they should not be allowed, right? We, I think we talked about that.
Isn't that said someplace else?
Well, I don't see it in, I don't see it in the version, I don't know, maybe it's in here. Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you are right. 13, no sign shall be placed on rocks tree, but it should say snipe signs in there because people might come in and they go, what is that? It's a snipe sign.
That doesn't have any, what I'm saying is, is that a common term that everybody?
I mean, it's a name, it's a name of a sign. It's a name of a type of a sign.
Two of us here that don't.
It might be a, all right.
Think I know.
Four.
For the big groups.
It's not a name of a type of a sign, a snipe sign?
It, it is. I just wanted to go back to understanding the base that I am doing the work in.
Okay.
All right, so I'm merging the two or am I, I am taking the existing?
Well, I think we're going to do some merging. I think we're going to do some merging because I think if you go back to the beginning of what you've got here, you've got, we've got to look, and this is what I have to go back and take a look. Have we been redundant now? We've got, if you go back to page 10, everybody, you've got C, prohibited signs. When you look at prohibited signs, do we want to add that to this or are they already in here? And that's what we have to go back and read because I think some of them are already in here. You've already got no, now that is in here. There, there's some that are the exact same. So on M, on page 11, it's the same as 13 in the regular Town Council draft or the ordinance. So you have some of the exact same things. No, and L is the same as number 12. So it looks as though we're, we're going to be merging is what it looks like to me, a lot of this stuff. You might have added a couple more in here. For example, do we have? Oh, I know. When it's on C2, prohibited signs, and then you go to not allowed, we talked about 2B, any sign or flagpole exceeding the height limit permitted in any district in which the sign is located. If that is in here, we probably want to change that. Did that come out of the Town Code or do you remember where that came from?
I think we added that. But I don't remember. The basis of the document that you had in your packet today was always the Town Code. We've just
Modified.
Taken it through a lot of permutations.
Okay, everybody look at C2B. That's on page 10. Look at B, it says any sign or flagpole exceeding the height limit permitted in any district in which the sign is located. Does anybody want to keep that or change it in any way? C2B.
Well, I guess it's some other place.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out. It's in here and.
It's like we could not above, isn't it the peak of a roof or a? Wasn't that a phrase we used for?
Months ago.
Yeah.
It's, that language is still there.
So I frankly find that a very confusing sentence and I think we could eliminate that myself. Because we already have on C, when we have 2C, freestanding signs exceeding 20 feet in height are prohibited. Do we want to put freestanding signs and flags? We could, we could include, is flags?
We made, I think.
Oh, you did add that, okay.
Did that.
How does everybody like that? Freestanding signs and flags, flagpoles exceeding 20 feet are prohibited. 20 feet is two stories. Now, we, of course, we've got the one across the street that's larger, but and I don't think anybody else in town has one larger than, I don't know if Lauder Real has one larger, but.
What about the?
Oh, American Legion. American Legion might have one too.
There's some residence, residential areas that have them. I don't, I haven't measured them, so I don't know.
Well, I think even in any residential, you don't want anything over 20 feet, really. I mean, that's my opinion.
I don't know. What is it in, what's Richard Stations? Because we have three flagpoles at the entrance.
I don't know what the height is.
I don't think they're over 20 feet, though. Oh, the entrance down there is. I think they're about 20 feet. They're about 20 feet.
I can see if we can find their original permitting documents, but that is going to take a bit, yes. Yeah.
I mean, it's, they were already permitted and already put up, so.
Okay, so it's eight o'clock and I want to just figure out what we are doing now. So what I like is I like taking some of the original and then I guess your next question is what part of the stuff that we have in this package do we want to include? Can we merge it somehow? Or how, how can we do that without being redundant or?
I can merge it. Let me ask a few questions to guide, guide me in this. So definitions, do you want to keep the new definition section?
See definitions, let's look at those definitions quickly. It seems like definitions really are more of a question, what do you think? Because it would be the planner that has to communicate to the applicant, this is not, you know, this is this kind of sign or not. I would think you would want some definitions to help you in your job. What do you think?
So I think I can work with the large group of definitions or I can work with the original definition because I, I wanted to leave this original definition in and it's still in there because it basically captures any new type of sign that could it could be created. It's, I want to see if I can find it.
Interesting.
Because it just defines a sign as anything with writing on it. We're getting there.
I mean, I think a lot of these definitions.
I can go either way.
A lot of the definitions, like a government regulatory sign, we don't need that. We don't need handwritten sign. Holiday decorations, I think some of these are just given, so I don't think we need a lot of them. But there might be some that you, as a planner, might think you need in order to understand the sign ordinance when you're, you know, talking to applicants. Does anybody else have any thoughts about that? What do you all think? Is it?
I like having them at, like at the front. I feel like as like a reader.
But do we need them all?
I don't think, I mean, if you take a couple out, I don't think it's really hurting anything. I mean, but, I mean.
I think it should be our planner's discretion, myself. I think if, if you see the type of sign inside the document, then I think we need to leave it in there. If it's not something that you think is pertinent, I think we need to make it as short and sweet as possible. And I think I like them in the front too, just because then you've got, you have people who can read the devs before they get in there.
I propose you look at the definitions, decide which ones you feel are beneficial. And if there's any in the definition, any definition that you feel needs more clarity, you write the clarity and then you send it to us and then we can just okay. What do you think, Madam Chair?
Yep, that's what I think. And so
exemptions, that's.
The exemptions. Now, there is the other big question is I like the exemptions up in front too. And we, except they might, they might be redundant, but I, I don't think that hurts to be redundant. If you, if people can see, oh, there's a they, they don't have to go any further. Let me see, where are the exemptions at in here? I can't remember where we have them now.
They're at the beginning.
They're at the beginning. So.
What are we exempting things from?
Yeah, they, they will have to adjust the permitted second because we're exempting them from a permit.
Okay, you might want to include that. Exempt, you mean, well, wait a minute, hold on. You mean de-exemptions, exemptions from permits. Well, that doesn't make any sense, though.
And you've got general regulations under exemption.
Well, that could be moved.
That doesn't look right.
Well, so this, the ordinance you're looking at now was meant to be, so each heading was supposed to have under it, general regulations, allowed without a permit, allowed with a permit and not allowed. So I kept that format, but under exemptions, it's really just all the stuff that is allowed without a permit. But the general regulations are things like, okay, you don't need a permit, but you still can't put it in the right of way. Or obstruct sight lines. And you still have to make sure it doesn't fly away in a storm.
Are we saying that we move that some, like lay cells like after definitions or something, just like general requirements or something?
Well, I think, like, there's just going to have to be re, another reorganization, but the question is the content of the exemption section, that idea of having a section with exemptions, do you want that incorporated into the ordinance?
Exempted from, exemptions from permitting.
Say, this is what needs and what doesn't.
So
Doesn't show up.
One of the reasons I think that we did this was in the existing thing, anything over four square feet needs a permit. But people aren't getting permits. So it's almost like it's so restrictive for the requirement of a permit, that people just aren't doing it at all. And so the exemptions creates less problems. They're less non-conforming.
I try and understood that.
So you want to have an exemptions section? Because it's easier for you guys. They just look at things that are exempt from having to have a permit, correct? Go here. Or is it more complicated?
It's not necessarily more complicated. It's just, do we, do you want, that was one of the big kind of things that you've wanted to happen with this ordinance. So I want to be clear that, like, we don't want exemptions or we do want exemptions for when I draft the revisions.
What is easiest for you?
I mean, I can just incorporate that section in the existing format of the ordinance as needed. Based on our, because I have the history of our conversations and like what pieces we added. So I can use that information to add the pieces we decided to add to the ordinance, if that.
So exemptions, as I'm looking at it, really are traffic signs. So exemptions, as I'm looking at it, really are, um, traffic signs, government signs, holidays, flags, directional signs, sandwich, well, we now know that sandwich signs are not part of that because now we have it in the other code that said that you have to have a permit for it. So that is no longer there. But real estate signs are open house signs are exempt. So I don't think it hurts to have the, these outlines, you know, if traffic signs, government, uh, holiday, flags, directional signs, real estate signs. I don't mind having a list like that.
Okay.
You know, I think it's a good idea to have that, you know, so that people go, wait a minute, uh, you know, what about, what's with real estate? Yeah, exactly. So I think having, but it has to say exemptions from needing a permit or something that's a little more clear about that. But the general regulations, now if you look under, uh, um, you know, in our sign ordinance, the current one under H, it has general sign regulations. They have one through, you know, 14. Um, so these should be merged into that because it says all, on D, 1D exemptions, all signs must be properly secured and weighted. Not a bad idea to put that into general regulations, but I don't think it's in here anywhere. It could be, but
You guys added that last time, so.
Okay, it wouldn't be a bad idea to add D under there in, in general sign regulations and just include, I don't know, everybody can, everybody quickly read H, general sign regulations. Do we have enough time? Does everybody mind an extra five minutes here? If you look at general sign regulations, read from
What page, please?
Well, look, you're gonna have to look up there because I'm telling you to read them from the old sign regulations.
What are we looking?
I just want to see if everybody's happy with what they say. I know that we've eliminated hot air balloons. We've we went the town road ordinance change, but I want to see if everything else is going to be okay for everybody.
I think the part, like the number six, I think the part about it being properly weighted, et cetera. Number six talks about durable material, good condition and repair. That might be the, well.
Oh, you know what? Can we change the name durable to, what was the term?
Rigid.
Rigid material? Because, uh, you know, we have a, a business, I won't say which one, that is using a canvas or a vinyl thing for their permanent sign. And it really is, it's faded, it looks tacky, but that's not durable. Uh, when I think of permanent signage, I think of something that is not bendable, but it's rigid. That's what I think. So when you say durable material on number six shall be considered durable material, I think it should be something that's more solid, like something rigid. Like made of wood, PVC, acrylic. Um, it could be on the face of the building. It could be. I just want to be more specific about durability.
I was thinking about the sign that I had at my office building in Waldorf and it was, um, you know, a group sign, you know, the slot.
Yeah.
And it was placed within, I guess like
A structure.
A structure, but the, the sign itself was kind of bendy because that was the kind of sign it was, but it was made of plastic, I think, but it was not, it wasn't like, like
But it was rigid.
Like a Gibraltar.
But, well, okay, but when I say rigid, it means that you can't fold it. You can't bend it.
Yeah.
If you bent it, could it be?
I, I see.
I'm trying to think of what you're talking about, that it could be, um, well, it was probably, was it canvas?
No, no, it was plastic. It was plastic.
Why did it move? I hate
Well, no, I'm just thinking that it and ma, and ma, maybe I'm misremembering what it was like.
Okay, well, let's
All of that.
Okay, let's retract that and let's go back to what durable material means. I am not happy with um, canvas as being a permanent sign. Because canvas to me frays very quickly. It fades very quickly. It doesn't
It's harder to read.
And it's harder to read and I just don't think it looks
We have canvas signs and
Yes, we have one up the street actually. I've never, since I've lived here and I, it bothers me every time I see it. It's the same sign. Oh, I don't know. Should I identify which building? I won't identify. It's right across from your house. It's right across from your house, actually. But, um, but anyway, I think there should be something more than durable. Does anybody have any opposition to changing the word durable? Or just keeping durable and putting in comma rigid as another word, another term to describe its being solid.
The thickness, basically, I guess.
I'm talking about the fact that it's not going to be flapping. It's not going to be moving. It's not going to, it's going to be, um, more permanent and more durable. I mean, if you're going to spend, if you're going to spend five years in a business or more, you're going to want something that's more than just canvas, in my opinion. If you're going to look like a, um, a business or if you're going to be a business.
Readability.
And it's the readability. Does anybody have a problem with adding anything to that? Or you just want to leave it durable?
So I'm looking up and it says top nine durable materials for outdoor signs. So do you really want to list all nine durable materials?
Well, um, no, I don't, because it's always changing depending on the, on the chemist involved. But I, I, I just don't want something that looks temporary. And to me, canvas looks temporary.
Unless it's a temporary sign. So this is like aluminum, bronze, steel, acrylic, vinyl, 3D plastic letters, wood, dye bond, aluminite.
Right. Instead of having to describe all those, why can't we just put rigid? They're all rigid materials that you're describing. Um, so anyway, I guess I'm losing this fight because I don't hear any nobody's agreeing with me on this, so I guess we'll just go back.
Rigid is just really not descriptive of what
Give me another term besides rigid.
Let, let me look up DSs.
Durable.
She's going to be out of Parliament too.
Commissioner Brown, I knew he was going to say
Say, what did he say?
What do you consider durable?
The only other thing that I'm, um, thinking is when you go with portable signs, I wanted to include things, except, you know, you have, when they say all portable signs shall be limited as follows, shall be limited as follows, should be limited shall all portable, okay, so on number 14, if you go and you, you go all through H and you go to number 14, I go to portable signs. All portable signs shall be limited as follows. Do we want to include a feather flags, which I keep going back to, and it should be in here. I'm sorry. Because they're so easily used and they, you know, they can be so easily abused. I think there should be a D and I think we should put feather flags or whatever they're called and put no more than one per establishment or two or whatever it is you all want. But I think we need to put them in here specifically um, as a temporary sign. And or not. Or do you want them as permanent signs, which, because you know they're all going to use them, but there's no place in here that has them in here. So what are we going to do about feather flags? Ms. Kelly, what do you think?
I can go either way.
Oh, yours is so healthy.
I can.
Oh, yay. Commissioner Chris, what do you think?
Who's using feather flags? Who's, like, is this, is this more of a, like a business application?
Oh, it is definitely business application. But you know what I'm talking about with feathers, right?
Uh, is it the, like the poles that you attach and they're long and, and narrow? I got
Yeah. And, um,
Does our square footage not take care of that problem? Then as far as, as far as limiting the number of, uh?
It's a lot of square, because they're very tall. And I don't know, I even know how you could even count the square footage on a feather flag, frankly, because they come, they're tapered, they're like a very
And they won't stop moving for you to measure them.
That's right. Stop already. So how do we want to do feather flags? Do we want to, um, let's just make, let's just say something. Um, let's put down number five, feather flags.
Shall not, shall be removed when Commissioner Greengold.
Well, towns that have pages on feather flags because they've been so abused in certain areas. I mean, you know, much of the feather flag, every five feet going all the way down the room to the marina. In worst case scenario.
Two.
Now we're getting corny and now we're getting goofy because it's late. So what does everybody want to do? Nothing or something about feather flags?
And that's comma, feather flags.
Oh, under B, we've got pennants and banners. So then we could put, oh, well, that's just for 14 days.
As they aren't limited.
Yeah. So it'd be 30 days per year, which is a month, which, uh, and they really should be something temporary so that when they're put up, you notice it, you know, if they're up there all the time, you stop looking at it and there's just more clutter in the air. So maybe that's a good point. Just have them 30 days a year. What is it?
Works for me.
Works for me too. What about you all?
Actually, I'm loving it.
Okay, we're going to add feather flags to that. Is there anything else we can add to this one? Feather flags? What else do you want to add? That can just take care of all of our portable temporary signs all in one right there. Um, I'm sure in there, what about inflatables? Do we want to do anything about inflatables? I know we have hot air balloons, but there's also but remember the inflatables are those kind of things that wiggle and wobble and you put, you know, you know, that's not
The inflatables are, I'd say, more temporary, right? But it, we see a lot of those out during Christmas time. There's a lot of
Do you want to include that in the feather flag thing? Pennants? Pennants, comma, banners, feather flags. Uh, comma, inflatable, inflatables, inflatables. And how about we flo, revolving? Uh, no, we don't want any revolvings or beacons, do we? We don't want any of those. Okay, so pennants, banners, feather flags and inflatables. Okay, so is there anything else we want to put into temporary portable signage?
This, but, and this may have been elsewhere, but you know when there's a human being swiveling an arrow sign or swiveling those signs?
Those are the good
I just
Well, you know, human signs are another issue. Uh, do we want to eliminate them? Do we want to include?
Or they? I thought that they were important because the person could move.
Alright, so, okay, I think you
So the, the way you have it right now, the only, the things that you list here are allowed. Everything else is not allowed.
Correct. So pennants, banners, the other flag
Your human sign is not allowed.
Inflatables and human sign. Let's put humans.
You want to allow humans?
No, I say we allow them, but just 30 days per year.
You will.
I'm finding with them turning into a scene 30 days a year. It was, hey, it was
It's only 30, I mean, it's only
I say, yeah. Okay, so fl, inflatables and human signs. Because that is a recent phenomenon. You didn't see that back in the day when this is written and actually, this was, you know, the 2011, this was added in 2023, so different parts. Okay, so where are we at now? Um, merging, we're going to merge, we're going to put in the exempt. Um,
Definitions.
And then some of the definite, most of the definitions that you think are going to be relevant.
Curated definitions.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes.
What about, um, um, oh yeah, we got to get to the violations. We can't do that tonight, so that'll have to be next week's, uh, next month's, next week. Next is me violations and enforcements we have to do and non-conforming signs. Those are the three things we have to do next time. But what else do we have to do next time?
Let me incorporate the non-conforming and the violation and then if ever, so then you'll get a new organization. And then you can focus on the non-conforming and violations. We can also talk about whether the organization works.
Yep. Now
We have us by tomorrow?
No. You can't.
Sorry, that is how goofy we get at the end of the day.
Yeah, make sure there's a whole separate category for violations on feather.
I was fighting down what you were saying.
Now, we also, if you don't recall, I think we talked about, we wanted a section of prohibited signs up front too, next to exempt. Right? Is that, no?
You have prohibited signs now. Did you want, you want those?
The exempt, I think. Then we want exempt and then prohib, I don't know. But, okay.
We'll simplify for the customers so that they don't have to go any further than the first
That's what we thought.
Two or three pages, then, then we should do it.
You're prohibited and you're going to be Okay, how does this all sound, everybody? Anything else we want to talk about as far as the signs are concerned tonight? And otherwise, I'll give you all a chance to give your piece. Um, are we doing signage for tonight? Yes. Okay, let's go on to comments, um, by the commissioners. Uh, Commissioner Radke, anything to tell us? Commissioner Brown, anything to tell? No?
One quick question. Did, yes, it's appropriate, but did we ever find out about that couple that wanted to buy that lot in Richfield Station? Do you remember?
It was outside of Richfield Station.
They didn't give a name or anything?
For the owner?
Yeah, the, with the purchaser, there was no name of the purchaser. Did we ever find anything more about that?
Franklin is looking around.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was turning them off because I thought they, 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 they chose not to because they couldn't get access to the lot.
Well, that's a problem.
Right.
For sure.
That was, we required them to find access. They could not find access.
Thank you.
And so next month, we can probably start with finish up signage, go over it. Do we want to start, um, with the, um, or do we have time, do you think, to start it next month?
How about, let me see how long this takes to do and then if I can get started.
I mean, yeah, I was going to try and start both or finish this up for the next, because we've got to do a public hearing probably. Um, or do you think that's not a good idea, August for a public hearing? Because it's dark in the town council. People may not attend. I hate to do a public hearing where nobody's going to come. Maybe we should wait till September and delay this a little bit so that they can
Maybe set the public hearing hopefully in September.
Okay.
And I'll reorganize this and then I'll let you know whether I can have coastal resiliency together as well. Um, in like two weeks. Is that good?
Perfect. Okay, great. Okay, good. Okay, all right. Well, thank you, everybody. I need a motion to adjourn. Around time, please. All right, and is there any discussion or any, you know, okay, very good. Okay.
It's the topic alone that drives you to about feathers.
Say what's funny. Is that we went all around the world only to
To me, you're out.
Sometimes you have to do that.
Conversation can degrade.
Well, we are getting giddy after the